Good evening. It is time for the April 30th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. It's called to order. We'll start the agenda with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this beautiful, beautiful evening. The first, next item on the agenda is the public, first public forum. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? I see nobody rushing to the microphones, so we will close public forum. Next is our student representative report. Shreya, thank you.
Hello. I hope that everyone had a great, well, I had my break, but I hope everyone has been enjoying the warm weather because today was so nice out. I was so happy, even though I was stuck inside taking my AP Stats final. It was still really nice to see everyone else enjoying the sun. But the report today, we're going to start off with Forestale. The first thing that I've noticed for, that they've been including in their school day is like purposeful playtime is what they've been calling it. And maybe they've had this for a while, but it's when kindergarten teachers are building in like specific time for their students to just like relax and take some time to themselves. And I feel like this is really like important to them because like especially when kids are young, like they want some time to just like, like they're very energetic, energetic. I have little cousins in there who just love to run around everywhere. So I feel like it's great to give them like some built in time to just like be like, you know, have some fun, play around. And Forestale also has a book fair coming up, which is always my favorite. I really, if they need any help, feel free to reach out to me because I would love to go back and be there, but I'm, that's very excited for, very exciting for both of them. For Oak Ridge, the students recently have visited the Whaling Museum in New Bedford, and this was sponsored by the PTA, which is huge thank you to them. And it's very interesting that they've been learning information that's relevant to like their lives because I feel like, well, we live on Cape Cod, there's like whales everywhere. And students like want to learn about things that they've seen in their everyday lives, like they want to learn about what's important to them. So I think that they're, it's great that they're doing that. And they're also having, like speaking on science, they're also having a science fair on Tuesday, which is, I think it's 1:30, 2:30, but this is like entirely like at home. And the Science National Honor Society kids from the high school have been helping out and going there just to like talk to them about their projects, see if they have any questions or anything. Their projects sound so good. I am so excited to see all of them on Tuesday because they like, some of the things that they've come up with, it's so interesting and I'm so excited to learn about them. Oak Ridge also has, I brought this up last time, but they've been like on their digital library, the students, the seventh C's classes have been talking more about like topics that are important to them that they want to know more about. They've like spoke on like buses and classroom experiences and like opportunities that their students have. And I think it's always great to hear about like student voices. I know in the high school, we get like so many opportunities to like say our opinions and it's great that like at Oak Ridge, we're also giving them the same opportunities. Something really interesting that Oak Ridge has been doing is that the admin team has been taking over the classrooms. So they go in and like they teach a lesson and I think this is great for them to like, for them to learn what's happening in the classrooms and to like see what the students are learning and also for the students to be able to connect to the like admin team because I feel like sometimes, especially like younger. I love our admin a lot, okay? But I feel like younger kids, like I would be like a little bit more like, you know, like just a little bit more shy. So I think it's great that they're getting like one-on-one experiences to build those connections. There's also lots of new like clubs that are being formed such as Puppy Pals, the Taylor Swift Club, and also No Place for Hate. And I remember when I was there, there was the recycling club, which was great, but I think it's great that they've been like expressing their interests a lot more. And hopefully these clubs grow to the high school as well because I would love a puppies, puppy, Puppy Pals Club. And then they've also, speaking about puppies, they've also had a scavenger hunt. So they hid like 100 pictures of Sandy around the school and the school got like the students would, if they found a picture, they would go to the main office and they would get a prize. And it's great that they had like a school-wide game that everyone engaged in because like everyone was working together for like, not working together, but they were all working on like a game together and it kind of builds more of a community. I'm sure if we did that at the high school, then a lot of people would probably get pushed a little bit because people won't want the prizes, but I think we should still do it. And then at the high school, I know the pathways have been something that have been like recently like introduced a little bit more and like we've been hearing a lot about them. And this is like from personal experience, the like a lot of students at first were like, oh, we don't know anything about the pathways. And then when kids don't know about something, they're like, we don't even like, we're, they're, you know, against it a little bit, but a lot of people have been starting to like grow towards them. It's like what I've heard, especially like the computer science pathway. There's like one of my friends, she's very, like she's going to major in computer science and she's been very into it and she's very excited to like keep on moving forward with it. And I know a lot of younger students have been saying like great things about like the biomedical pathway and everything as well. So I think it's been going really well. And for the computer science one, we had like a group of students who won first place for App Inventor project, which is so great. And then Senora Lodge has been having a March Madness, but for songs in Spanish. And this is so great because it's allowing them to like first learn about the language a little bit more, but also learn about the culture, which is so important. And sometimes like that gets lost in the material because we're just so focused on like the facts that need to be learned that sometimes we forget about like the culture that's also present there. So it's great that she's been doing this and allowing them to connect a little bit more. And speaking of culture, there, we've also had murals at the high school being painted. There was one near, I think right now there's a history, like near the history wing and then the English wing. And it's like reflective of like our school and our curriculum and what we teach, which is, and they look so good. They're painted by students. Every day I go to my English class, I always see them starting to paint because that's like when their block is. And it's great because it used to be a blank wall and now it's so beautiful. And Hattiestown also was recently when I've heard, I sadly couldn't go to any of the shows, but I've heard wonderful like reviews about the show. People have been saying that like it was so amazing and like to see all their emotions. So I, I do feel really bad. I didn't know that was, it was a tragedy at first and then I heard about the story and I was like, oh, that's a really sad story, but I didn't spoil it for anyone. And we've also been having a lot of like awareness days, especially like White Ribbon Day, which was when men like advocate for like abuse that like women have, that have endured. And they, like we encourage people to wear like white and then during, like at the beginning of school day, we handed out white ribbons. And it was so great to see like not only how many people were wearing the right white ribbons, but like how many people also came in like wearing white as well. And it's great to see like everyone come like united for a cause. The seventh graders and their classrooms have been using like textile designs, like embroidery in their like artwork. And I feel like that's so great because my seventh grade year was in COVID, but like to see like what they've been doing and like how they're again, like letting their students like work on like their own pieces and like giving them like multiple like art mediums to work with is so great. There've been trips to Finland and Vancouver. Finland was lots of fun and I'll say a lot more on that another time, but huge props to Ms. Fudal and Ms. Mel Taylor because they went like to both of these trips in so, such close time. And I'm so like, they were so great throughout the entire trip and it was lots of fun and we're very grateful to be given the opportunity for them as well. And then in the chemistry classes, students have been focusing on how like red cabbage can be a natural pH indicator. And like I, they've also been learning on like acid-based titrations. So it's, I, that was one of my favorite units for chem and it's just what's been going on. And this, this week, no, next week, AP exam start, season starts, so good luck to everyone taking them. And we also have prom next weekend, so the grand march will be there, I hear it is, I think at 4:30 or at fourth, at 5:15 is when it starts, but yeah, lots of exciting things coming up.
Any questions, comments for Shreya?
Shreya, I'm going to ask you a chemistry question and I'm going to put you on the spot right now.
No.
What is the most common indicator that's used that very much is like cabbage? Begins with P. Pheno-
Pheno-
Phenotheoline.
Okay, got it. Well, I should probably-
That's your chemistry moment for tonight's school committee meeting.
Probably start studying for my AP chemistry exam a little bit more then. Next time I come, you guys can quiz me because I'll be done with that, but well, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shreya.
And we so appreciate Shreya taking the time at the end of a long day to come and give us our, her report. Okay.
Outside of the table.
There's a future school committee representative there. Okay, next item up are the review and act on the meeting minutes of the regular, am I on?
Did you do public forum?
I did public forum with-
A moment, sorry.
Right through it, quickly. Review and act on the meeting minutes of the regular business meeting dated April 9th, 2025. May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of our business meeting of April 9th, 2025 as presented.
Second by Burt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. They are approved. Let's see, correspondence and announcements.
You have in your packet, we got within the last couple of weeks, official notification from NEASC or the New England Association of Schools and Colleges of Sandwich Middle High School's re-accreditation. It is a decennial cycle, so it's for another 10 years. It doesn't mean, you know, 10 years of doing absolutely nothing. You know, it's a very active process. However, I know we had talked, you know, you got some immediate feedback after the visit back in October. And I know that we and Jeannie discussed the positive report, but you can see the summary of the commendations, which are pretty extensive. And then just some of the ongoing work with regard to ensuring that all of our written curriculum maps are current, will be part of the follow-up process. And as I say in the background notes, the Commission on Public Schools is requesting the first report of progress and planning in about a little short of two years on February 1st, I'm sorry, next year rather, February 1st, 2026. So again, I think it is huge credit to the hard work and commitment of Jeannie and the entire high school staff.
Let the record show, commendation to the principal of the Sandwich Middle High School, Jeannie Nelson, and all the students, staff that were involved in the whole process on an outstanding report. Thank you. I have just one quick thing from the Cape Cod Collaborative Director, Ho Panskin. She just asked me to inform the committee that all of the member districts approved the articles of, articles of agreement. And that was the entree of Plymouth into the collaborative, so we're all set. Moving along to the superintendent's update.
All right. First off, and I believe I informed you via email as well, also within the last couple of weeks, we've been keeping track of now the process of both the House and the Senate coming to consensus on the upcoming FY26 budget. Typically, April is the month for the House consideration and May would be the Senate. Within the last couple of weeks, the House Ways and Means Committee released its $61 million budget. The good news for us and all of the minimum aid districts is it increases the chapter 75, chapter 70 amount from $75 additional per student to doubling it to 150,000. So that would represent a pickup of about additional $324,200 in chapter 70 aid. We were in a similar situation last year, I realize, as far as the incoming revenues, both the school and the town have very conservative estimates. If you look in our FY25 budget proposal, it's for flat chapter 70 by design. So realize as similar as we did this year, that additional amount, should it go through, and again, we're still relatively early in the process, could be used for reinvestment in facilities and capital projects. So just to keep you apprised on that, I'm anticipating probably by the end of this week, early next week, the House should finalize their budget and send it on to the Senate.
Just for clarification on that, should that go through, we would follow a process with the town similar to last year-
Correct.
-in which we would make that argument to move it into capital and that would be a special town meeting.
Correct, to the fall town meeting. A second item that I have is, oh, I'm sorry.
Commentary, but we do that because if for some reason something happens at the State House and that money doesn't show up, we don't have that shortfall. Though it seems to happen every year, but crazy things have happened.
Yeah, and realize unfortunately, the trend over the last least 10 years is the state budget isn't usually finalized until late July, early August. So there, there's still going to be uncertainty. The second item that I have is just for FYI purposes, our district safety team has scheduled three evacuation reunification drills that are upcoming for all three of our schools. Keep in mind, we only did the reunification exercise with Forestale with our youngest kids. This year, we're going to be doing it with all three schools. We will start with Forestale on, let's see now, three weeks from today, Wednesday, the 21st at dismissal. Then we'll do the high school Friday, the 23rd, right around lunchtime or so. And then Oak Ridge, Wednesday, June 4th, around nine o'clock, right after the buses. Come back to Oak Ridge after Forestale. I did put out right before vacation, an email to our Oak Ridge and middle high school families asking for volunteers, knowing that we're not doing it at the end of the day, so we would need parent volunteers to pick up their students at Corpus Christi and then transport them back. We've gotten a decent response. We'll probably do at least a couple more all calls with regard to that. This is, you know, again, our philosophy at the district safety team is always, how do we further the process? How do we make our drill planning more complex so we get smarter and sophisticated? This year will be interesting because we're looking to do the reunification so that parents will not leave their cars. So Bryce Harper really is kind of spearheading a pretty elaborate system, similar to what the pickup system is at Oak Ridge currently with placards on the cars and kids having matching codes to parent placards that they'll literally have stickers on their clothes. So I will keep you posted, but as I said in the background notes, if you're interested in attending any of these drills, please give me the heads up and more than happy to observe.
I would strongly encourage it. I attended the last one we did. It's, there's a lot of moving parts to it and the last one went very well. I'm sure these will go, we'll learn more doing these ones, but if anybody can make it, I would encourage you to, to attend one.
Yeah, and if you could send out reminders again, I remember we got the reminder and it seemed like so long ago, so maybe just a refresh.
It was the Friday before vacation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So is there the preference that we attend the reunification at the Corpus Christi or do we want to observe the front end or?
I think you want to see the back end. The operation for all intents and purposes will be Corpus Christi. You know, we, we're changing some things up where, you know, we were housing the students in the Paris Center. That works great for Forestale and Oak Ridge, but for the middle high school, it doesn't. So we're kind of changing more of the operations to the school. The whole transfer and reunification process is going to look different. In some ways, we found that actually kind of going old school with clipboards and printed lists versus something that's electronic is probably easier and quicker. But our concern is we want to do the reunification more, more quickly and more efficiently. The third piece that's something that I'm really pleased and will probably before the end of the school year, do a deeper dive with the school committee, but we're actively investigating kind of having a universal communication tool. It is something that other districts have adopted. It's known as Parent Square. I would invite you to investigate it. But really, the, the big piece, as I say in the background notes, is to have one-stop shopping. Feedback that I know has been present for a really, really long time is if you have multiple kids in the district, possibly at different schools or even in different classrooms, they may be using different apps to communicate actively with parents. And you know, I know a lot of, at the high school, a lot of teachers or coaches might be using Remind at the elementary level and might be Class Dojo and so on. We're looking to unify that and we're actively investigating a product called Parent Square. One of the key pieces with regard to Parent Square is everything is integrated and families would have the option, if you want all of your communication to be through text message, great, you can choose it. If you want all of your communication to be through email, you can choose that. If you are a family that speaks Brazilian Portuguese, everything is automatically translated. So between that and also really the accessibility piece, I've gotten feedback and we're aggressively trying to remediate the issue around the smore newsletter and accessibility for visually impaired families. This product, I'm being told, has the accessibility features built in. So this coming weekend, if not this weekend or the next weekend, you'll probably see a Blue Knight highlight that looks a little bit different, but we want with our Sandbox account to test the functionality of this product. So it's something that we're excited about. I know Bryce Harper has been doing a yeoman's job to kind of do the investigation and so on, but we really strongly believe that this is going to be a great solution for us. Any questions on any of that?
That's great news.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that you persevered on that and will come up with a platform that is much better at the user end. Old business, other topics not unreasonably anticipated by the chair. I do not have any other than at the next meeting, if we recall, it will be reorganization and the seats will shift, so keep that in mind. Let's see, new business, adjustment of the Sandwich Middle High School GPA calculation, student handbook change, Principal Nelson.
Thank you. Just for a little bit of background, we have a school council that meets once a month and the school council is comprised of students, teachers, administrators, and parents. They bring forward lots of different topics to discuss and to look at policy-wise, in general programming, it can be an assortment of different topics. One topic that came up was the GPA. So, so we actually for the past few months have been taking a close look at our current GPA scale that no one can really remember when it came to be. So it's been there for quite some time. It's a 4.0 weighted scale and, and every school, we've done a lot of research, every public school chooses their own GPA calculation scale. And so they vary wildly from school to school. However, Massachusetts State Colleges do have a recalculation scale that they use to streamline and kind of equalize all of the different applicants who are, who are applying to their undergrad programs. So we took a long, hard look at all of our neighboring school districts GPA scales on, during our council meetings. We also discussed them with the department chairs who brought them back to their departments. And, and after a lot of time, we came to the conclusion that the best move for Sandwich Middle High School would be to adopt or a proposal to adopt the Massachusetts State College Recalculations 4.0 weighted scale. Why? It, I think we had, this year alone, we had over 60 applicants of the senior class apply to AU Mass University, a school in Massachusetts State School. So I think like if we are using a scale that they are, that is transparently reflective of how they are going to be evaluated through the college application process, I think it's a realistic, it's a very realistic way for students to see where they are. The other part of it is that we are also, what, what the council liked about the proposed scale is that we are constantly encouraging students to challenge themselves and to take rigorous higher level courses and to push themselves. And if you look at the two scales, the college prep level is, is identical on both. There's no change to college prep. However, there is an increase in taking more rigorous courses and to really challenge yourself. And so I think all of our messaging to students, especially with the pathways, is, is really, really, let's take advantage of the programming we have and not be afraid, we'll support you, but we want you to, we do want you to challenge yourself as you get, you know, higher up in, in learning in the upper grades and take advantage of our, our really diverse AP programming. And so this, this scale does that for kids. And that was one of the positive comments that we heard from students about this proposal.
Questions, comments? Christine?
Besides college applications, I'm sorry, besides the college applications, when else is the GPA used or noted? Is it used for eligibility for what other kinds of scholarships?
Yeah, it, it depends. It's used for lots of things for, I know for different internship opportunities, for, I know for the military placement test, the ASVAB, the transcript, it's part of the transcript is the GPA. So we, we continuously get requests for students who are applying to various jobs in all sorts of sectors for us to send them their transcript. These are graduates and on the transcript, the GPA is there. So it is, it may not be like the data point, but it certainly is a data point depending on what, you know, where they're headed, what, what either the company's looking for, the internship, the program.
How about other things within the school, like National Honor Society, valedictorian, salutary and those kinds of?
Yes, so GPA, right, would be calculating rank, class rank. It would determine as, as it has, like the class rank is, is driven by the GPA and National Honor Society qualifications, certainly. Some scholarships are, do you ask for a threshold GPA depending on what, what their requirements are?
Thank you.
There's also MIAA eligibility. I don't think that's much of an issue, but so just, I sat in on, I raised this issue last fall when we were looking at, we were putting in something in the handbook to address graduation requirements because of the change in the law. graduation requirements because of the change in the law, and this was like the section above it that caught my eye, and we started talking about it. I did have the opportunity to sit in on one of the school council meetings where a bunch of students were talking about this, and they were pretty, they were not shy, by any stretch, and they were pretty adamant and supportive of this because they thought it better reflected the idea that, of the extra effort and work that goes into the higher-level classes. As it is now, it didn't feel like it was, the current weighting did not reflect the increased level of effort and work required associated with the higher-level courses.
So, college prep is level. It's, the grade is the grade on a four-point scale?
Right.
Okay. I don't know if we want to make a notation or?
We can. We, they?
Just blank.
Exactly. We can, the baseline, or, yes, like, we can make a comment on that.
And essential is a minus?
Essential is a level four. It would be a general-applied classroom, a general-applied science.
Is this non-credit-bearing?
It is credit-bearing.
Okay. Could you give an example of a course?
So, general-applied mathematics, general-applied English, general-applied science. It's an applied classroom typically led by a special education teacher, occasionally in collaboration with a discipline subject.
It's graduation requirements?
It fulfills all graduation requirements.
I don't know, maybe that's implicit, but maybe a comment related to that?
Sure, sure. Yeah, the levels, so, level four, and then college prep, and honors, is an honors-level class, and then the advanced placement, sure.
Any other comments? Bert?
If a student, for example, gets a 20, is it, you do by quarters?
Yes, we have quarters. Yep, semester is quarters.
If a student gets a 20, 70, 70, and a 70, is that 20 bumped up to a 59, or does that 20 stay the 20?
It stays the 20.
Okay. Because there are, there is at least one school on the Cape that bumps up to a 59, but if a kid's only doing 20% of the work, that's what he allocates. All right, thank you.
Just a question. Do any of our electives run less than a full term?
Less than a full term?
Yeah.
Term, no. They will, they could run a term.
I'm just thinking, as, you know, students get frustrated that they can't broaden their curriculum, and just, and at this university-level quarters are .25, so there's still a way to build the GPA, have more exposure, just something perhaps to think about going forward.
Right. Some electives are a semester, some are a term. Typically, in the middle school, they're term to expose, the idea is to expose the students to a variety of electives. However, in the high school, they are mostly semester electives.
Okay. So, there's no need to adopt a quarter?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
And then, with the state university, colleges and universities, a dual enrollment course, when they're calculated, which is a college course taken by a student in high school, would still, would carry the AP?
The college-level course.
The college's end, as they recalculate.
Right.
Anything further? Can we have a motion?
I move we adopt the proposed change to the GPA calculations as presented, and would ask that it be implemented, you know, immediately, as we look forward to, like, end-of-year senior junior awards and things like that.
Immediately would mean for the year? For FY, for the school year, 24, 25 school year.
So, when they, you know, because they have, like, junior scholars?
Second.
Any, any further discussion, Ms. Nelson?
Just, one, so, the proposal, the proposal for me coming from the school, our idea was that this proposal would be implemented for the school year 25, 26.
Okay.
That was the, that was, well, that was our understanding on handbook changes, that they come at this time of year.
For not implementing immediately effective with the 25, 26 school year.
I'll withdraw my motion and move that we approve the GPA proposed change for the 25, 26 school year.
Any further discussion?
What was the junior scholars you were talking about? You could explain that.
So, when they do, they have senior awards night and junior awards night, they have senior scholar, silver scholars and gold scholars, which is basically top 10 students, top 20 students. My only intent was that this be used for, to recognize those students.
I think, I understand the sentiment, however, I think the confusing piece would be, we've got students now who've been under three-quarters of one system, and also the fact that we have published, even though they're dynamic documents, a student handbook and a program of studies for 24, 25 that have this current scale.
No objection. That's why, that's why I changed the motion.
And students have completed their college applications and their transcripts up to this time on a set of numbers, so, in terms of timeliness. Okay. So, what is our motion? Could you repeat that?
I'll just repeat it. It does not change that we adopt it as presented for the 25, 26 school year.
Okay. We have a second. By Christine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Will you, all aye? Bert, did you?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry, 700, it is unanimous, and thank you for looking at that. Those numbers really didn't make sense, and where did you come up with the one point, whatever it was, somewhere along the line?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let's see.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Okay. Other topics not reasonably anticipated, I do not have any. Moving into subcommittee reports, I will turn this over to Danielle as Chair of the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee.
Thank you. Okay. So, we recently conducted our Superintendent Evaluation Summitive Reports. I want to thank the members that took the time and careful thought while evaluating the superintendent. It is one of our most important roles as being a school committee member. We're responsible for hiring, evaluating, and if needed, terminating the superintendent. So, the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee consisted of Christine, Bert, Christine Brown, Bert Fisher, and myself. We first met in December, then again in April with Dr. Marushchak. We reviewed the process of how we should be conducting the evaluation using the Vector Solutions site formerly Teach Point Evaluation System. The superintendent completed the five-part cycle beginning last year with his self-assessment, analysis, goal-setting, and plan development, implementation of the plan, mid-cycle goals review, and now here we are at the summative evaluation. Since the school committee members only see a portion of all of the important work that he's being, that the superintendent is doing for the district, he's shared his portfolio with us so we can better understand the important work being done. So, it can be found, his important information can be found online at jpmportfolio.org, and the Part I of the evaluation was to assess the progress of the goals that were set by the superintendent and how the school committee members rated the progress towards these goals. The three goals are professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. The goals should be smart, specific and strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic, and results-oriented, timed and tracked. The committee then rated on Part I, with the options of exceeded, met, significant progress, some progress, did not meet. So, in this goal, the school committee members rated as following and completed the evaluations. Under professional practice, it was six significant progress, six of us completed the evaluation, and it was six majority. All six said significant progress. On student learning goal, the school committee members rated significant progress, all six. School improvement, significant progress, all six. We were all aligned in that, in that portion of it. And during this portion of the evaluation, there was room for comments, but it wasn't mandatory, and some of the comments that I will read from that section is, "Student performance benchmarks continue to improve, but there is always more work to be done. Likewise, while we continue to make incremental progress with respect to student retention, continued focus is necessary to ensure every Sandwich student wants to stay home and be a Blue Knight. Data shows that SMHS provides the best return on investment on the Cape, but the superintendent needs to continue to champion the many good things happening at SMHS to keep students in the district. District safety team continues to address areas of concern and conduct data, conduct drills and exercises to increase staff capability and confidence. While there is still work to be done, SPS is better prepared to respond to any all-hazard incident that could impact school operations than it was 12 months ago, which has been the right thing to do for our students, staff, and community." Under, one of the comments under professional practice goal was, "Dr. Marushchak has worked hard to identify gaps in the district system of staff evaluation and is assuring accountability and depth in staff evaluations moving forward by implementing a new teacher evaluation rubric in observation forms and summaries that are more meaning, more meaningfully reflect impact on student learning. The district is better positioned to provide real and reliable feedback and develop and coach employees." Another comment under student learning goal was, "Continued attention is needed in the area of middle school math achievement, both through data collection and analysis and evidence of consistent upward trends. Early data looks promising, but more robust improvement is necessary." Under school improvement goal, "Dr. Marushchak has prioritized improved retention and successfully met his initial goal of reducing the number of students who leaves SPS after 8th grade for other programs such as private parochial charter and tech for high school, from 35% to below 30. Actually, it's 28%. The district, and by extension, the town, still has a way to go to ensure a safe, welcoming learning environment for all students that I believe will drive retention. Our town, and by extension, our school district, has developed a reputation of not accepting." This section on goals is not a major concern of mine. This is another comment. "My concerns are students are learning at a high level and at a reasonable cost, plus staff morale is good," which appears to be. "He was handed a district that needed some improvement, particularly at an administrative level, and after a careful assessment, he made the changes. His attention to procuring optimal data tools and staff development related to collecting and analyzing data and using data to improve outcomes is paying off in student outcomes, staff competence, and satisfaction. The first strategic plan of Dr. M.'s tenure promises continuous progress." So, the next part that we reviewed, we went into, the standards, Part II of this dealt with the four standards and indicators of effective professional practice. We rated the assessment of performance on each standard. Standard 1 was instructional leadership, Standard 2, management and operations, Standard 3, family-community engagement, and Standard 4, professional culture. The committee then rated these with the options of exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. Once again, there was room for commentary, but not mandated during this part. So, in Part 2, under instructional leadership, there were five that voted exemplary and one that voted proficient. And some of the comments under instructional leadership. "Dr. Marushchak has stayed consistent with his weekly visits to different classrooms for the past three years. He continues to provide copious amounts of data to the school committee, demonstrating the progress and weaknesses within the Sandwich schools." Another comment was, "Dr. M. places great emphasis on being present and highly visible to teachers, staff, and the district administration team," or DST. "His attention to planning, using data to analyze student performance, and to inform practice at the building and district level is clearly and regularly communicated to staff at all levels." Another comment, "Continue to focus on data-driven decision-making. It's becoming more ingrained in district action plans and school improvement plans with the primary focus on student achievement. Introduction and championing experiential learning via career pathways has increased student enthusiasm and engagement in computer science." Another comment was, "Dr. M. supports teaching and learning through budgeting for extensive and ongoing and professional development, dialogue, and regular feedback." Under the second standard, Standard 2, management and operations, five voted exemplary, one voted proficient, and some of the comments for that was, "Deftly managed the renegotiation of all staff union contracts to produce fair outcomes. Continues to seek efficiencies and budget and adjustments to FTE to ensure staffing is commensurate with enrollment. He is efficient at school committee presentations, encourages presenters to get to the point, give a concise, which at times can be difficult with some presenters." Another comment, "Dr. M. builds an annual operational budget and capital expenditure plan through an inclusive process with the DLT, or the district leadership team. Other district department leaders, school committee and town officials that is realistic, fiscally responsible, and support student learning in academic and co-curricular areas." And another comment was, "Dr. M. works closely with the district safety committee, vendors, state and local officials, to procure and install new security cameras, external/internal locks, alarms, and efficient LED lights, internal and external, to the building," to name a few recent projects. So, Standard 3, we discussed, we rated him on family and community engagement, where six voted exemplary, zero voted proficient, or anything else, it was unanimous. Under those comments, "He keeps a watchful eye on his staff evaluations and addresses the strength and weaknesses of those he evaluates. He has made difficult changes when called for. Communication and outreach to families and the community has continued via many channels. Extensive outreach to multiple community stakeholders during strategic planning process has helped foster the idea that all citizens of Sandwich are shareholders of the school system. Dr. M. seeks input on a wide variety of issues from members, his various advisory committees, school councils, and community groups such as Sandwich Cares and Sandwich for All. The avenues of communication by the superintendent is remarkable. Over the last three years, Dr. Marushchak has increased engagement and encouraged community building within Sandwich. His communication style encourages families to feel valued and involved. The weekly emails and social media presence showcases all of the positive achievements occurring in the district." So, under four, under professional culture, Standard 4, five voted exemplary, one voted proficient, and some of the comments were, "He keeps a watchful eye on his staff evaluations and addresses the strength and weaknesses of those he evaluates. He has made difficult changes when called for. Continues to nurture a positive, supportive culture across the district. Holds self and others accountable to effectively and efficiently deliver results." Another comment was, "Dr. M. models continuous improvement in the performance of his role and in his interaction with and expectations of all staff in the district. He respects the work of all staff and in the district, works directly and indirectly to ensure they have the resources and support needed to provide what students need to meet and exceed their potential." And another comment was, "I am confident that he will do his best to implement the recommendations from the strategic plan." And then, lastly, the overall summative, summative rating, which we were all required to comment on, you could either rate him exemplary, proficient, I'm sorry, yeah, let me just scroll down to the end. Oh, wait, I did it. Exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory, and we were required to comment on this portion, and the overall performance rating was five voted exemplary, one voted proficient. And the comments for that are, one of the comments were, "The Sandwich schools continue to move in a positive direction under Dr. Marushchak's leadership. He is conscientious and diligent in his work and when responding to school committee members' inquiries. I look forward to seeing the positive progress continue over the coming years in Sandwich." I look forward to seeing the positive progress continue over the coming years in Sandwich." Another one was, "When I ask the question, is SPS better off than it was a year ago? The answer I come to is yes. While there is still significant work to be done, Dr. Maruszek's leadership has been the catalyst for many positive improvements across the district. Increased focus on data-driven decision-making and rollout of career pathways should deliver dividends in future years. Continued demonstrated strong work ethic is indicative of steadfast commitment to Sandwich students, staff, and the community at large." Another comment was, "I applaud Dr. Maruszek for leading the district with confidence and competence." Another one is, "I applaud the steps that Dr. Maruszek has taken to improve the quality of the educational experience for all students. He honors that continued assessment of strengths and needs is critical in order to stay current and adapt to the ever-changing needs of a town." Another comment was, "Although I checked exemplary, if exemplary was an A and proficient was a B, he would get a B+. I do have a concern about declining enrollment, which he is addressing, and overstaffing, which he is also addressing. But if he wants an A, if he wants an A, loss from grade eight to grade nine is still a concern. Cost per student is reasonable compared to the rest of the Cape, and he has let retirements address overstaffing. But there are still some paraprofessional cuts that could be made. Some classes at the high school are under 10 students. He gets an A+ on settling contracts." Another comment, "Dr. M. is an experienced, highly effective, compassionate, and tireless educational executive who is dedicated to making the Sandwich Public Schools the best place to work, to learn, and to feel safe and accomplished." And the last comment is, "I believe we are incredibly lucky to have Dr. Maruszek as our superintendent. He not only leads through his experience, but through his heart. He strives to do the best for staff, students, families, and our community, which is demonstrated through the actions he consistently takes. He also sees where the gaps are so ongoing improvements can be made." And there's just one more in the document for tonight, the packet. If we could look in the folder, if you could just click on MK End of Cycle, there's still room for improvement for one thing. If you could just play that for me.
So you have to humiliate me again?
You're getting better. I mean, last year was karaoke, this year was the rock band. Turn it up. Ah, darn. I think we have to play it again, sorry. Oh my God.
Yeah, I'm glad they drowned me out.
So help me with process. We need a motion to accept the summative evaluation of the superintendent of schools for the 2425 school year, correct?
I make a motion to accept the summative evaluation for the years 2425 on the superintendent.
Second by Kevin, any discussion of that motion? Let's discuss, and then we can actually vote.
Question, is this a public document?
It is a public document, and all the documents that we completed and Dr. Joe completed in his portfolio that went into this public evaluation by the school committee, which is a public body under open meeting laws, is public. So discussion of the motion.
I think Danielle did a great job in getting it all together, so.
Thank you.
She did a great job. And she kept, and she reminded us from time to time. And Dr. Joe helped me a little bit with the, I was putting it in the wrong area, and he directed me to get it.
I did that too.
It could be a little confusing.
It can be. Did a self-assessment of Sue Miller, but it wasn't. Cut and paste fixed it, but. I don't, any further, any discussion? Tracy?
Just a thank you to the subcommittee and Danielle. I know how much time and effort it takes to do this.
Thank you.
It does take a long time.
And I just have a comment to make. I've been in a professional administrative role for a lot of years. I don't think there's a CEO level, executive level evaluation that is this nuanced, this demanding, and this public in any other sector that we deal with. So, and I appreciate Joe's candor and openness in his self-evaluation, and the portfolio is amazing.
Thank you.
And that helps us remember. A lot happens in a year.
That's a good reminder, to kind of go back over the previous years and see all of the achievements, all the work that's been done. Thank you. Kevin?
Just, Danielle kind of summarized it, so I won't be too long. I'll just say, the comment of, are we better than, I think we are better than we were a year ago? That's me. Not shocked. I've written some, but I do think we are. I think we are, I think we're better than we were last year, and I think we are that much better than we were two years ago. And that takes leadership from the top, so I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Christine?
Just one quick detail on the, under the evaluate your comments towards goals, progression towards goals. The fourth, third paragraph, looks like it got cut off mid-sentence. It was in your notes, but not there. So just, I think the rest of that sentence kind of adds context to the sentence stem there. But yes, thank you for compiling it all, and I appreciate the pretty expansive assessment that people have done across a variety of accomplishments. And I know there's a significant number that we've left out as well, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just would note, and I noted it in one of my comments, that the strategic planning process, the first one of, formal one in Joe's tenure, will be an amazing roadmap for us for the next five years. And I look forward to that. Any other comments?
Yep, Tracy? Just, I think it's important that the public does know, like how wonderful what you provide us is, and transparent and helpful. And it's really important to recognize that, and.
Thank you.
Want to acknowledge that.
If there's no further discussion, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the summative evaluation of Dr. Maruszek for the academic year 2425, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Moving right along, let's see, policy subcommittee. Christine, are you, who's the chair?
No, that would be me.
Okay, Christine, talk about us.
Note taker, so we plowed through between, before last meeting, before this meeting, and have actually, as of tonight, finished going through all the policies over the course of two and a half years, which, and will have for you next meeting, to consider and vote on. A lot of changes, and a lot of meaty changes in Section J especially. There's just a lot of updating that needed to happen, policies that had been updated and changed and reflected current law. And I'm going to try to stick to, what was it in your background note? Joe, I will be efficient and brief? Or stunningly efficient yet informative?
This is your last meeting, you can take all the time.
You can do a Cory Booker.
Not one to want to take longer than necessary.
Close down at eight, right?
But you will have, and hopefully, maybe we can get to everyone sooner than, you know, a day before the meeting, all the updates in the J, K, and L policies, which is the remainder of the policies to be reviewed, because there's quite a few changes. So thank you to the team for indulging and focusing so well tonight. Very proud.
I thought it was remarkable that you guys wrapped that up. Just, I said to all three of you, if you got through the J policies, that would have been a remarkable accomplishment, but they also tacked on K and L, so job well done.
If I may, I'll just say, she said, you know, it's a two and a half year process. Going through that policy manual is not exactly, you know, everyone's going to jump first in line to go do it, but it's also important because it creates the foundation of everything in the district, if you will. I'll just compliment Christine in her last meeting. We'll probably address that shortly, but her leadership throughout the two years of shepherding us through it, and also committing tonight to actually getting us over the finish line where she easily could have sneaked out without doing it, so thank you.
And I think a comment you made to me earlier, Kevin, was, this incredible body of work got us to baseline and going forward with MASCE's updates and whatnot. Unless there's a major shift in law, policy, whatever, it will not be as arduous if we keep up changes as they come in.
This was a heavy lift, the maintenance should be a light lift for the future policy subcommittee.
Thank you. Any, then we'll move on to liaison and advisory committee reports. Any of those? I will just make mention, as the liaison to the strategic planning committee, we had our, as a total group, we had our final meeting today. And when our facilitator, Dr. Ruth Whitner, showed us kind of where we were in January to where we were today, particularly at the end of the day, we really worked with a draft based on all of our work so far. Kind of working a little bit backwards, but we need to do mission and vision. But we have a draft of core values, and those core values inform four major strategic objectives. And within those, there are initiatives, and then outcomes, and from there, action plans will be developed. So the leadership committee with our facilitator and superintendent will now move this into what, beyond what was described as a drafty draft today, to a more coherent draft, lots of revising and whatnot. And then they'll deal, the leadership team will deal with that on May 21st. And then at some point, it comes back to the school committee. We'll go to the strategic planning committee for their review, comment, et cetera. And then at some point before the end of this academic year, it will come to the school committee for a vote. So it, to me, it's been an amazing ride. Process has been very interesting. The communication and the quality of the discourse and it's just been amazing in terms of all the data that we've had to deal with. So more to follow, but this has been an impressive process with very wide reach in terms of stakeholder input and expertise in terms of the process consultation. So more to follow on that, and then we have to implement it, but that's exciting. Next item of the warrants, can I have a motion to approve the warrants?
I move that we approve the warrants as presented and signed by a majority of the school committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Christine, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, it is 7-0, unanimous. Which brings us to the second public forum. Come on down. For those of you who remember The Price is Right, you know, I'm dating myself.
Still on?
Is it? Oh, I don't know.
Good evening, Charlie Holden, 35 Lakeview Drive, and the liaison on the select board to this committee. I would like to congratulate Dr. Maruszek on his impressive evaluation report on the committee. And then I would like to thank Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, for her service to the community as an outstanding member of the school committee. Thank you, and mean it sincerely.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Future agenda items? We'll come up with those as we move into our own retreat process.
We've got actually a lot, I think May is, for the most part, booked up. Keep in mind, we're going to try again during the second meeting of May with both Senator Fernandez and Representative Zarros. Shreya alluded to it, seeing that she was one of the kiddos that traveled to Finland, but I know there's a strong desire of those students to present their trip, and their findings, and their partnership with their peer school in Finland.
What? Stop it all!
Just keeps on giving.
Wasn't intentional. All right, and this coming acknowledgements and closing remarks. This is, this is bittersweet, but we know this is a really happy time for Christine as she retires and re-cloakates with her husband to the beautiful city of Newport, Rhode Island. But a bit of a token for you, for your service to the school committee and to the town.
I'm a moment, a few words, but thank you. It's been great to serve on this committee, and I think the town of Sandwich is, should be grateful for the group that you have representing the schools and the town and advocating for the best interests of our students. It's been a great group of people with a variety of perspectives and very respectful, intelligent, and collaborative, which couldn't ask for anything more.
We wish you well.
Thank you.
Any further?
You can always run in Newport. You can always run again in Newport.
I know, it's a city, it's a little different. We'll see.
The mayor?
Time will tell, time will tell.
Oh, interesting.
Thank you for everything.
We'll campaign for you.
Any other acknowledgements or closing remarks?
I'll just, I said it before, I'll say it again. Thank you to Christine for all her hard work at the main table and also behind the scenes of the policy subcommittee, where not a whole lot of people come and observe the work, but it was important. It was a long road, but thank you very, very much, and I wish you the best.
Danielle? I just want to say thank you. We came in together. We spoke back in 2022, you know, planning out, how are we, are we going to do this together? And we did it, it was great. And you've been a great asset and a great friend, so thank you.
And I'll add that she sits right next to me and helps me when I mess up a little bit and guides me, so I appreciate it.
It's been so much fun to be on the policy committee with you, which is not something that I think may have been true otherwise if you were not on it. So thank you for bringing so much fun and being the way that you are. It's been a pleasure.
All right, I'll have to go too. I have known you for quite a while, and thank you for showing me the ropes. You really helped me take this on, and I appreciate you, all you've done.
Okay, moving along, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn for our next scheduled business meeting of May 14, 2025, at 6:00 PM, right here at Sandwich Town Hall.
Second by Bert, motion made by Kevin, any further discussion?
I forgot to mention in the closing remarks, the PTSA fundraiser at Seafood Sandwich.
Yeah, we got to go.
It's 8 o'clock tonight, so after you leave here, or you turn off the TV at home, get to Sandwich.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much, we are adjourned.